Could everybody please take their seats? Just doing a quick head count. We're good, good for quorum. Then, okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm the chair for this committee of the whole meeting, councillor Phil St Jean-Pickton Ward. I'd like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, media and anyone who is joining us in person and electronically for this committee of the whole meeting. Today's committee meeting is meeting at Shire Hall in Pickton. Today's agenda lists all of the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. Recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.on.ca. Under Agenda Item Five, I will be asking for comments from the audience. Today, there are no registered comments from the audience, but if anyone would like to speak at this section of the agenda present and are present at this meeting, you're welcome to do so. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks@pecounty.on.ca to register. A reminder that if you do participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and will be posted to the county's website. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of August 29th, 2023, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or fire exits from wherever you are tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall, please mute and limit the use of your cell phones. Now, can I please get a motion to confirm the agenda? Roberts and Branderhorst?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a Roberts-Branderhorst motion that the that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of July 27, 2023 be confirmed.
All in favor? That's carried. Item Three, Disclosure of Pecuniary Interest in the General Nature Thereof. Does anyone have anything they wish to declare? Seeing none, we shall move on to deputations. And we have Andrea Dawes, Special Initiatives Manager, County Arts, to address the committee regarding the public art planning process for Prince Edward County. And Andrea is on the screen, joining us remotely. Can you hear us, Andrea?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, it sounds like we're connected. So, um, so giving us a deputation, you have 10 minutes and you can start anytime.
Great. Can I just clarify if I have 10 or 20? I was just told I had 20. I won't go as far as 20, but...
It's, it's 10, but at the discretion of council. Uh, I think I'll just look for a knot of heads. We'll give her the appropriate time that she needs, up to 20 minutes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding, so please go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll share my presentation here. Just one moment. All right, does that look good on your end?
Yes, and all council members have copies of your presentation in front of us, so.
Great, wonderful. All right, thank you so much. I'll get started. Um, I'm so sorry not to be there in person. I was definitely planning to be there in person, but we have a contagious illness in the household and I felt like it was better for me to just keep everyone safe on your end and, uh, and zoom in. So thank you for, for your understanding on that front. Um, so my name is Andrea Dawes. I'm with you today as the Special Initiatives Manager for the Prince Edward County Arts Council, also known as County Arts, a wonderful local nonprofit I've been with for over three years. Um, as you may know, our services for artists and community members have expect exponentially expanded over the last several years, thanks to our increased capacity for fundraising and program development, um, including through our new County Arts Lab, which just celebrated its first year of engaging hundreds of residents in free and sliding scale participatory arts programming and many other initiatives, including the Public Art Project you see pictured here, uh, for which we partnered with youth artists from The Rock. Um, just this week, we launched two exciting new initiatives, our Indigenous Voices Fund Grants Program and the county's very first arts mentorship program. Um, so it's been a really exciting few years, never a dull moment, and we've been working hard along with our executive director, Jana Smith, who's tuning in and growing staff team uh, with the support of an amazing board and artist advisory committee to bring all this to life. So just wanted to thank council and the municipality for your ongoing crucial support for our work in the community uh, through the municipal community grants program and other things coming to our events and supporting the arts in general. So thank you. Um, so my, my arts background is actually in music. Um, I'm a violinist and violist, but I've always had a big passion for public art, so it's been a real, real honour uh, to be working with staff over the past several months to help the municipality move forward with a public art policy strategy on behalf of County Arts. So thank you for that opportunity. Um, so I'm hoping that everyone's had a chance to read the report submitted by the Recreation and Community Facilities Department, but I'll begin with a little context, just in case. Um, this is the motion that, uh, that we're addressing today, 202667, um, which, which reads that council recommends staff be directed to develop a public art policy for the future display of any public installations or pieces of art that reaffirms Prince Edward County's commitment to anti-racist attitudes and to inclusiveness of marginalized peoples in its community in consultation with the Prince Edward County Arts Council. Um, and just before I go to the next slide, um, just wanted to point out this beautiful mural by one of my favorite artists, Emily Kowagashig, um, which is displayed on the Port Credit Fire Station in Mississauga called Flame of Life. Uh, I'll be giving some examples of public art throughout, uh, throughout the presentation. Um, so we started working with municipal staff, primarily Chris Palmer, who I believe is there today with you uh, in 2022 and have been very closely involved in the process providing subject matter expertise and guidance as needed. Um, some examples are here, just basically um, conducting dozens of interviews with relevant stakeholders, including public art coordinators, consultants, artists, community organization representatives, like, "Welcome here," municipal staff, analyzing and identifying best practices in the public art policies and programs of other municipalities, um, initial mapping of public art stakeholders in the county, existing public art and potential municipal sites for public art in the county. Um, we developed a draft public art plan outline, um, including a plan for public consultation, which was in the attachments for this, this meeting agenda and, um, developing a library of resources and best practices related to public art, but especially um, ensuring that principles of equity, diversity and inclusion are embedded into, um, any public art programming that comes out of, of Prince Edward County. Um, I just wanted to take a little, uh, stroll through, um, some examples of public art, just to, to kind of give you an idea. We have, everybody has an idea of what public art is, art placed in the public realm, but I thought it would be helpful to briefly explore the wide range of forms and scale by highlighting some examples of public art projects and installations. Um, I'll start with the top, middle image here, um, a bronze entitled Nonviolence by Carl Frederick Rittersward, uh, who was an acquaintance of John Lennon and started working on this piece the night that John Lennon was murdered. Stayed up all night, as the story goes, um, to work on a smaller version of this piece and it eventually um, became, was donated to the United Nations and still stands at the UN Headquarters in New York um, as a memorial for John Lennon, but also stands as a symbol against violence and war anywhere in the world. Um, an example of, of the, the, you know, very strong impact and meaning that public art can have on passersby. Um, uh, in the bottom left, we have a natural sculpture, so sculptures don't need to be um, expensive. Um, they can be made of natural materials. Obviously, they have a shorter lifespan, but um, yes, lower materials costs and a nice opportunity for emerging artists to be involved as well. This was, one is located on Humber Bay Shores, looks over to Toronto. It was a Toronto sign, lots of spurred lots of selfies. Um, in the middle below, we have a bronze sculpture of Tom Thompson um, with his plein air painting setup and canoe, um, commemorating his, um, his time and experiences in Huntsville. That, that is located in Huntsville. Um, and finally, um, a World War II Wire Soldier sculpture. This was, uh, created by local sculptor Daniel Reddick, um, thanks to our 2019 Public Art Grant. It was unveiled in 2020 at Glenwood Cemetery. Um, and they have a vision to have more of these sculptures honoring veterans, um, throughout the cemetery. Um, another obvious category that comes to mind when we, we think of public art as murals. Um, we have several, um, starting to have some examples here in the county. Perhaps the largest, um, is this Wisdom of the Universe. Uh, beautiful mural on St. Andrews Presbyterian. Um, so this was a part of St. Andrews Efforts, Truth and Reconciliation Efforts. It is Wisdom of the Universe by Métis artist Christy Velcour, um, who some of you, I'm sure, know. Um, an interesting example in the middle from a fellow rural area, part of the Common Uncommon Art Exhibition in the region of Kingsport, Nova Scotia. Um, this mural was created by a local artist with a passion for rural agriculture and worked with the owners of the farm to create a piece that spoke to their particular spirit and approach to farming. And finally, I really love this mural by Megan Keigho, um, along with County Artist Chrissy Poitra from Sparkbox Studio. Megan helped facilitate a Murals and Public Art 101 Workshop. We, uh, provided for 15 local artists this winter in collaboration with Base 31. Um, so this is called Brain and Bloom. It's on the external wall of St. Thomas's Public Library, uh, another small town in Ontario, bringing light and color to what was probably a pretty nondescript municipal building before. Um, moving on to some other examples, um, you'll probably recognize this first photo, some of you, from on the left, from our beloved Firelight Lantern Festival, put on annually by the Department of Illumination. Um, nothing quite beats parading down Main Street with your community dancing and waving your homemade lantern. Um, a really magical experience. Um, and in the middle, we have light installations and projections. These can be a low material um, and also easily temporary, uh, public art, um, installation. I was fortunate enough to experience the one pictured in the middle at Sydney's Opera House and as part of the Vivid Sydney Festival, but there are lower resource options, of course. Um, and augmented reality is a fun new public art frontier that's been growing and becoming more accessible. Uh, we have some artist members who are already experimenting with this and it's a fun way to imagine and visualize past and future stories in the present and much more. And finally, um, public art can be incorporated into landscaping, streetscaping and wayfinding elements, existing or new. So just a few examples of this, we have, um, a landscaping, landscape garden project on the left. Um, this was a very large project, um, called Menadu Ogiddigan or Spirit Garden. A very beautiful installation by Indigenous artist Terrence Radford, who's located in Coburg. The installation is located at Lake Ontario Park in Kingston, was carried out by the City of Kingston in collaboration with Alderville First Nation, home of the Mississauga Anishna Bag of the Ojibwe Nation, uh, whose ancestors had lived in the Kingston area. Um, you might have in the middle seen the many colorful picnic tables now dotting Prince Edward County parks painted by local artists, like this one by Nella Casson, that lives in Benson Park. And finally, you can infuse art into existing or new signage and other kinds of wayfinding elements. I love this example um, by Indigenous artist Donald Kretsja, who resides in Newmarket and, uh, created a series of trail markers in towns, uh, throughout York region. Um, so now that we have a sense of what public art can be, we can ask the question beyond beautification of our public space, uh, why do we need it? And there are many, many reasons. Here are a few. Couldn't fit them all on. Um, public art projects can create new jobs and training and learning opportunities for artists, fabricators, architects, engineers, administrators, other contributors and spur innovation in our rural creative economy. Um, it, those projects can engage and embed artists and the arts and a creative approach in efforts to address community challenges and corporate strategic priorities, uh, from climate change adaptation to sustaining a livable community in the face of rapid change. It can create new year-round cultural destinations and landmarks for both residents and visitors, who in turn support surrounding local businesses, have, help attract new residents, including, you know, those in professions that we are desperately in need of. Um, just a little quote from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities that reads that "Arts, culture and heritage improve the ability of municipal governments to influence local economic development by attracting and retaining a skilled and talented workforce." Public art can define, reflect and sub-celebrate our cultural identity and community spirit by interpreting the social, historical, cultural and natural environment, enhance our sense of place by engaging the community, the community in the creative design process, helping to tell our past, present and future stories. It can foster civic pride, community cohesion, a sense of belonging, social interaction, self-reflection and shared stewardship of our public spaces and, uh, further truth and reconciliation efforts by asserting Indigenous presence and providing opportunities to learn about Indigenous experiences on the land, create welcoming, safer gathering spaces for all members of the community, revitalize and beautify underutilized public spaces. Um, and something that we deeply care about is breaking down barriers to arts participation and enjoyment by bringing accessible art experiences out into the public realm. Um, this is really front of mind for us and, you know, a lot of, we have such a vibrant arts community, as you know, um, but many of the opportunities to interact with art in the county are in private spaces or open to the public, but might require tickets to experience them. Um, so public art is really this perfect opportunity to ensure all residents can experience the joy and awe and other, all the other benefits of arts experience. Um, yeah, yes, I couldn't fit it all on the screen. Um, there are other benefits like promoting pedestrian activity, walkability and safety. The list really goes on. Um, this is a, um, a photo of Ree Neill and Thomas Del Balsall. Thomas, um, a local artist, received our 2022 Public Art Grant um, to create this series of murals on the external walls of Carbon Gallery, just down Lipson's Walkway off Pickton Main Street. Hope you've had a chance to check them out. Um, that was a really exciting, exciting project that came to fruition this spring. Um, so now that we've explored the potential of public art to enhance and improve the wellbeing of our community in all of these ways, I wanted to speak to the importance of having a comprehensive, community-informed public art plan in place to guide decision-making around public art projects. Um, so a public art plan is informed by extensive public consultation, very key point, and provides essential recommendations to guide the development and implementation of a public art policy and related procedures. So it will come out with terms and definitions, vision and criteria for the public art that is placed in Prince Edward County, selecting locations, sites and themes. Um, we would come out with recommendations around, around procedures for acquiring public art, whether it's through commissions by the municipality or private, uh, developers or entities. Um, community-initiated public art projects, so how to deal with requests from the community or offers and donations, when and how community members become engaged, involved in the public art process. It's different for different projects generally. Um, collections management, so once we have the public art, uh, what is our plan for maintaining and conserving um, the inventory and deaccession, which is the, uh, removal of a public art piece from a municipality's collection? And finally, uh, recommendations around administration and funding of a public art program to make sure all of the, the above, um, can be carried out, um, effectively and, um, and in a way that really embodies that community, uh, engagement part. Um, so an effective public art plan or policy or program would all be aligned with and support the municipality's efforts on several priorities outlined in the Corporate Strategic Plan, livable community, maintaining rural and historical character and several, several arts and culture-related commitments in the official plan as well. Um, details are, can be found in the, the draft, draft public art plan outline.
Andrea, uh, just let you know you have four and a half minutes left.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, so why County Arts? Um, why am I here today? Uh, as you'll see in the report, municipal staff is recommending that we lead the public art planning process and we are very confident in our abilities and excited at the prospect of taking on this role. Um, but why us? If you haven't already, we invite you to read our qualification, qualifications and expertise document uh, included as an attachment to today's agenda, but I'll just give a quick overview. Um, the municipality would be creating job opportunities for, uh, local nonprofit staff, as well as the artists that would be involved in the public engagement processes. We'd be carrying out this process at a, at a lower rate than an external consultant. Um, we have extensive experience operating our own public art grant program uh, and facilitating public art projects, um, like the one pictured here. Here's our facilitator team for the Do You Belong Here? Uh, installation that's at Benson Park right now, that was created by youth artists. Um, we have a demonstrated knowledge, passion and engagement in this process to date. Unique proposed approach to public consultation where we hope to incorporate, um, the arts and artists and embodied engagement activities, which I can tell you more about if you have any questions in the public consultation process. And we're embedded in the local artistic community. We have a 37-year history, championing the arts and PEC, um, a 500-plus-person member mailing list. Um, and we are undertaking ongoing efforts to support, include and elevate perspectives of underrepresented equity-deserving artists and groups with work with our advisor, our Artist Advisory Committee, Indigenous Voices Fund and more. Um, so just a little look at what our, our proposed planning process would be. Um, we're kind of rounding up the first phase here, uh, the discovery phase and the neck, with the next phase being public consultation, which would occur um, in fall 2023, um, with a variety of activities, including some more traditional ones and some more interactive activities um, to facilitate, um, more, um, engagement with people's senses as they're experiencing, um, public space. Um, that would happen this fall and we would be, um, coming out with a report to staff, um, just updating on the public engagement activities and efforts. Um, and the preparation of the, the data analysis and synthesis and development of the recommendations and finalizing the final report and plan would happen basically from January to August 2024, with us coming back in approximately one year with the public art plan detail, with detailed recommendations, um, to put into action. Um, I'll just leave you with a, with a little quote here from Jay Pitter, an award-winning placemaker in Toronto. She says, "Public spaces have the power to foster understanding, inspire meaningful community participation and ownership and instill joy. Every park, market, street and alleyway is a litmus test for belonging." Um, we wholeheartedly agree, um, and, and hope you do too, and thank you for listening into this exploration of what public art, uh, can be and what it can be, bring to Prince Edward County. And I'm happy to answer any questions or direct to staff as, if need be.
Okay, thank you very much, Andrea. I'm going to, uh, don't go anywhere and look to council members. Uh, anybody have any questions directly for the, uh, for Andrea? Councillor Penelope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Andrea, for your presentation. As we move forward, I'm personally hoping that we have a very wide spectrum on what we're looking at for art, because I believe there's people that are challenged in different ways on how they may or may not be able to put perfection into a drawing. But I feel it's every bit as important to showcase their work as it is anybody that may be many years at doing art. And I'm just hoping, and you could maybe answer that, are we looking at that as well?
Wonderful. Thank you for your question. Um, of course, so, so, I mean, ideally in a public art program, you have opportunities for a range of artists and community members to also, um, contribute to public art in Prince Edward County. Um, there are really, I mean, I kind of gave an example through our, um, project with The Rock. So these were artists aged 13 to 17, um, that now have their own installation up in Benson Park all summer long. Um, they were guided by professional artists, um, but we really do believe in, in that everybody, everybody is an artist, everybody who makes art is, is an artist. Um, so in a public art program, ideally you have opportunities for everybody from emerging to, you know, established artists and also community members, um, to participate and definitely have a say in, in, in the process as well.
Councillor Roberts, I had you next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Andrea, thank you so much for the, for the deputation and, um, uh, became a bit of a presentation as well, but, but it was really, really useful and really, really interesting and I, I really support it. Um, my, my question, Andrea, given that you're here on behalf of County Arts is a, maybe a little bit of an umbrella one. Um, I think, as you mentioned, but didn't stress all that much, that the huge economic benefit of the arts uh, in Ontario and potentially here in the county. Um, I'll get to my question, but there's about $30 billion worth of economic benefit to Ontario as a province and over 300,000 jobs, thanks to the arts and arts and culture sector. Um, and when I looked at municipal surveys in Ontario, um, they came down to basically three. One was, uh, an 83% support by municipalities uh, for the arts being not just a secondary thought, but a foundational thought when it came to economic development. Um, and 88% of the Ontarios, of Ontarians surveyed in these, I think there were 18 municipal surveys in these surveys, really appreciated the role of the arts in revitalizing settlement areas, especially in rural areas. And you did reference the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, but I think the next paragraph after that reference point would have read um, that it also doubles, uh, the extended stay by tourists and visitors to those areas that are rich with an arts and culture scene, which involves music, festivals, the arts, et cetera. So my question is, given the huge impact, uh, for municipalities, especially smaller municipalities in terms of, uh, economic benefit and social wellbeing, community wellbeing, I guess, um, are we doing enough, in your view and in the view of County Arts, uh, to really integrate the arts and culture scene here across all the areas of our county municipal decision-making? Are we doing enough? I know Chris is doing a great job. Um, but, you know, many municipalities, Huntsville here in County, other places, have really integrated the arts much as perhaps we do the environment now, across all decision-making in their municipality for economic reasons.
Thank you. That's a really big question. I love to have a long conversation. Uh, but I'm sure, uh, thank you, councillor Roberts. That's, that's, um, wonderful for you to have done that research and, and we are in that research as well and, um, in our arts advocacy efforts, where we were in touch with many of you last year, we're kind of trying to bring those benefits, um, you know, all economic, et cetera, to the fore. We're kind of trying to bring those benefits, um, you know, all economic, et cetera, to the fore. And, and really that art is, is more than a pretty picture, so much more. Um, so I think um, we, you know, we've just been um, communicating with uh, Visit the County. Eleanor, who um, we were discussing some, some statistics on the fact that visitors to Prince Edward County are um, more likely than the Ontario average to visit, be visiting arts um, and experiencing arts and culture in Prince Edward County than visitors to other um, regions. Which is, which is kind of amazing, given that, you know, our big draws are beaches and wineries and, and such. Um, so we are as an organization, it's, it's, you know, um, a huge part of our, our mission. Um, to, to really make Prince Edward County a cultural destination, like a national cultural destination. Um, so I think that um, there will be more discussions to, to have along, along this front. Um, but public art is, this investment in public art, I think is a, is a wonderful way to kind of, again, like make, make those arts experiences as accessible as possible um, to as many people as possible. So it's really exciting opportunity that, that is before you. Um, but we look forward to continuing those conversations with you around municipal investment in um, in the arts in Prince Edward County and what forms that, that can take. Um, and we are very excited to have those conversations. Thank you.
Follow up councillor Roberts?
Yes, just to, just Andrea, I'd be glad offline to continue the conversation with you. I think it's really important. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councillor Branderhorst.
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation. I think it's fantastic that we're focusing in on public art, especially with that it's a access for art as it can be sometimes challenging for certain individuals to access art. It's always amazing that we can make art accessible to all and um, kind of the impacts it has. I do have a question on, um, how do you see this program helping out our shoulder seasons and off seasons with Prince Edward County as uh, what councillor Roberts was saying, that it can affect things in an economic way. And he brought up Huron County and other areas, but I guess I was thinking about, can this be used to help foster? Um, installations and bringing people that this is a thriving community all year round that has so much to offer all year round?
Thank you councillor Branderhorst. Um, that is a big, again, a big pillar of what we are working on is creating those, those shoulder season opportunities. We hear again and again in our artist surveys even that, that those, you know, um, economic opportunities for artists to, to create and connect with audiences when the tourists, many tourists have, have gone away. Um, and so it is a big part of what we're doing. So, I mean, more permanent public art installations are obviously here year round. Um, and so I think um, could bring, be a great opportunity for um, kind of increasing, oh, like, I heard about this, this really interesting like sculpture. Um, let's, let's go check it out in addition to other things that might be going on. So it's like, um, it come, becomes part of the like Prince Edward County experience, also for residents, I think is really important. Um, a lot of public art uh, installations can be interactive as well. So creating those spaces for um, for visitors um, to come and then support the surrounding businesses. We do this through like, you know, our, the Makers Hand in November, and we're trying to create more of those uh, shoulder season opportunities. Um, but also for, for residents to interact with on a year round bu- business and really attract, make it, make this an attractive place for, for, for people to come and kind of interact in those spo- social spaces. Or so many of our public spaces have, have kind of been swallowed up. So it's a way to kind of claim, um, claim that, that space for the community residents and visitors included.
Okay, great. Uh, councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, thank you Andrea for your, your detailed presentation. Um, a little different sort of a question. What's before us today is, is essentially a proposal to, to be a partnership with county arts in developing a plan and then a, a policy, uh, which is put forward in a rather lengthy, very well detailed report. And, and to me, that, that assumes that county arts is the appropriate organization to partner with. And that means I hope that, that you represent, um, can I say, all the sectors of the arts that we should be concerned with. Can you confirm that that really is the case? Or would you be missing any, any element of the arts that we would need to talk to somebody else about?
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much for that question and inclusion is a big, big um, thing that we have been working on over the last uh, few years and with our efforts to include more artists in all of our opportunity, opportunities. Make sure that they're accessible to as many artists as possible. Um, from equity seeking groups to also artistic disciplines and mediums. So making sure, um, you know, most of when people think of public art, it's often like the visual artists, for example. Um, but we, we do see, um, you know, our public art grant has gone to, went to a theater um, artist two years ago for, you know, to create a new uh, staging um, of a play. Um, and I think that those opportunities for, you know, just, you know, putting into place some, some procedures and facilitating um, public art that is, that goes beyond the visual art as well. Um, so in our public engagement, um, we are, we already have that kind of built in um, go to, you know, as the go-to resource for arts in the community, we do have a built-in community, but we're constantly trying to uh, make sure that more people are coming into our fold. Um, that's very important for us and especially through the public engagement process. Um, that will be very important, not just to be working with, you know, as many artists as possible and as many different mediums, but also as many residents as possible, people who might see themselves not as interested in art. Um, but that, once you kind of uh, show what it can be, they, they, they might be compelled to participate in processes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is councillor Grasso.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, how can Visit the County work closer with the county arts?
Thank you for your question. Visit the County has been a wonderful partner. Um, we're just, you know, exploring this, this partnership together. They're new, as you know. Um, and um, uh, we have, uh, we did consult them um, as part of this uh, uh, report development process. Um, we had a meeting with Eleanor Cook. Um, and they are big supporters of, of this, I, this public art planning um, endeavor. Um, and public art in general. Um, so far, um, we, they have provided us with some helpful statistics about, you know, the impact of um, of the arts on visitor experiences. Um, and they are partnering with um, the Prince Edward County Arts Trail on some promotional assistance. So there, we're kind of like, I, I think there's, there's a wonderful will there and openness. And we are, we are very thankful for that. We've just, we're just kind of like creating that relationship right now. Um, but uh, but yes, they're very supportive of, of public art and how they can help, help, you know, um, add that to our, our, our list of many, many um, reasons to come to Prince Edward County.
Are there any further, before I go to, back to councillor Roberts for round two, uh, any further questions? From council? No? Okay, councillor Roberts, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and thank you councillor Hirsch for that question. It, it brings something to mind. Just wondering, do county arts, do they also include um, members of the screen industries? Um, I'm thinking of film, television, gaming, that sort of thing. We have a rich, relatively speaking, for twenty six thousand people, twenty seven maybe, uh, population of independent producers that often get featured by the region theatre. And are people like Heather Haldane, for example, who are working on attracting more uh, of screen arts uh, employment to the county and Quinney region. Are you connected with that community at all?
Yeah, great. I mean, yes, we, we, some of our members are, are filmmakers and we and have benefited from our, um, for example, I'm thinking of Ophelia Spinosa, local filmmaker, young filmmaker. Um, who um, was the recipient of our Student Arts Award when she was younger and now, uh, and then later a market development grant um, to, which allowed her to get a short um, in many festivals internationally as well. So we support through our artist fund grants, um, uh, mainly and they're, you know, they're welcome to. Um, we had a filmmaker also as our artist in residence, um, Kami Abramanian. Um, who um, was working on a, on a, on a film and um, as part of the kind of a storyboarding experience, as part of her artist uh, residency at um, at the county arts lab. So, so yes, they are in our, in our midst. Um, and we'd be, we'd love to explore, you know, any public art related film, film um, opportunities as well.
That's great, thank you. That's a two billion dollar industry in Ontario, so be nice to get a good chunk of that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, one last call for any further questions for, for Andrea? Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing any, any at this point. Thank you very much Andrea for your, your presentation and uh.
Thank you.
Now, okay, and, and so now I need a uh, motion to receive. A mover and secondor, councillor Branderhorst, councillor Penel.
This is a Branderhorst-Penel motion that the deputation by Andrea Dawes's special init- um, init- uh, initiatives manager county arts regarding the public art planning process for Prince Edward County be received.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so now we move on to item six, six point one, items for consideration. Oh, there you are. We have Chris here with us, uh, a report of the Recreation Community Facilities Department dated July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three regarding the public art policy and plan. So I guess I'll ask Chris if you have anything further you wish to add, or do you want to just get into questions from members of council?
Sure, I'd just like to make Andrea, as you saw, has his very thorough in her presentation. So I think she's covered most of what I would, uh, would do, which we worked on together. So I'd just like to take a moment at the top to say a good afternoon to everybody and thanks for having us. Uh, we wanted, I wanted to just uh, recognize county arts who've worked extremely closely with staff on this project for well over a year now. In the research and the development of all the recommendations and supporting documents they see in the report. And in particular, I would like to say uh, thank you to Andrea, you saw the work that she's done. Uh, she's been extremely diligent in her efforts to support the community on this project. And from day one, working with, with Andrea, she's brought a level of engagement and passion that has never wavered. It's always been very inspiring and her level of commitment is greatly appreciated by staff and is no small part in us recommending county arts in the role that we have. So thank you very much Andrea for all your hard work on that. Public art guided by expert hands with a long-term vision can create a sense of place and shared identity within a community. And it represents the diversity of heritage practices that are present in every society. It strengthens bonds by constructively prompting reflection and dialogue. Uh, county arts are our local experts in their field. Uh, they have incredibly strong ties to the community um, and to local and regional artists across the board, even professionals. Several of the consultants, I don't think I would have been able to get to as quickly without their support. Uh, and they've continued to engage with those folks, which is wonderful. Um, and it's also financially great for the county that we've had, we have those connections without the bills that come with them. They have a deep uh, understanding of what makes Prince Edward County unique. And for thirty seven years, they've been celebrating that through, through art. Their level of passion and excitement demonstrated by county arts throughout this process ha- have shown to staff, and I hope a little bit today as well to everyone here, that they're the right choice to lead on the development of a public art plan and that plan is necessary to inform our policy. And then just a very brief note of housekeeping, the clerk's office very kindly uh, did amend in the minutes recommendation three to include the phrase on municipal property, just for added clarity, it, it doesn't change anything, it just adds that clarity. So recommendation three would now read that council adopts the procedures outlined in this report. The government requests for temporary public art installations on municipal property until a public art plan and policy is in place. And that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you and, and my apologies, I failed to properly introduce you. This is Chris Palmer, supervisor of museums and culture services for the municipality. So, uh, first thing first, I need to get the motion on the floor. And then, uh, then we can start asking questions and making comments. So, so your hand councillor Hirsch, you're willing, moving that? I'll slide it over to you. And secondor councillor Roberts.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a Hirsch-Roberts motion. Um, that council received report RCF oh three twenty twenty three. That council placed a temporary eighteen month moratorium on permanent public art installations on municipal property until a public art plan and policy are in place. That council adopt the procedures outlined in this report to govern requests for temporary public art installations on municipal property until the public, public art plan and policy is in place. And the council directs staff to commence extensive public consultation led by county arts to inform the public art planning process and return to council in Q four of twenty twenty four with a draft public art plan prepared by county arts with staff support to inform the future public art policy for Prince Edward County. And if I might speak to that?
You may, sir.
So this is, this is a pretty impressive report. Um, I think some, some, you know, following our previous troubles with public art. Um, we embarked on this um, path. And, and Chris and everyone else has done a fantastic job in, in pulling together, I think, what is a um, a well-thought-out direction for us to go. It's taken longer than we would have liked, but um, sometimes it takes longer to get things right, I guess. So um, to me, that's, that's very impressive. I really like the concept of coming up with a plan first and then a policy. And in the meantime, kind of put a moratorium on, on uh, you know, putting art in public places. It's very tempting when somebody offers you something for free to say, oh, sure, thanks very much. And you put it up and turns out that half the people or more than half the people don't think that was such a good idea. So I think this is definitely the, the best approach to follow. But um, and as always happens around this table, we, we like to talk about money too. I found it fascinating, way down in the bowels of your report, to see the chart of, of budgets that other municipalities have for public art. Things like one percent of their budget goes to public art. I'm guessing that our percentage of our budget going to public art right now is hovering around zero, yeah. So, um, can you confirm that part of this plan would be, and, and the ultimate policy would be to come forward with a suggestion for what, what budgeting maybe would be appropriate for the county to be, to be putting into art?
And so through the chair to councillor Hirsch, yes, that, that would come through a little bit of public consultation. In our research, we've discovered several ways that different municipalities fund the public art. So it's not usually one percent of, of an entire budget, it's often one percent of their capital budget. Uh, and sometimes it's linked to specific projects. So if there's a capital project going forward that sort of has a, a, a demand for public art. For instance, some places are building a bridge and they would like to decorate the pillars of that bridge. They'll take one percent of that budget and dedicate it. That's not the case in all municipalities. It's, it's called one percent for art. So it's, it's widely done enough that there's a brand name for it. Uh, but it's not always the recommendation. Other municipalities have chosen to fund specific projects that's recommended by a governing body. Uh, in this case, we're going to go through the public consultation phase to see who that governing body might want to, might want to be through public consultation. County arts has expressed interest in continuing along beyond just the creation of the public art plan, which is wonderful. Uh, so yes, there's, there's multiple ways to fund public art. Uh, both Andrea and I've had long discussions about the fact that, you know, we, there are limitations to the budget here and what we can do. Uh, and county arts is very open to that. They have a track record of doing a, a lot of work with very little and that, that's very encouraging to me. So while I'd like to see a, a maximum budget approved for public art, uh, everybody's willing to work with what we can actually do. And that's going to come through the, the year-long consultation phase and more research and as we go down. But every municipality does it a little bit different and Prince Edward County, I think, will be uh, unique in, in its approach as well. But yes, there would be, there would be a budget moving forward to, that would be allocated to public art or at least to the governance structure that supports public art.
That's great, thank you.
Did I see your hand up councillor Roberts? You'll wait a second, okay. Uh, councillor McNaughton?
Thank you, and I, I would echo councillor Hirsch's sentiment. It's nice to see this come forward. Uh, and I think it's been very sensitively prepared and I'm, and I really appreciate the work that you all have done. Um, it's, it looks, it looks very promising to begin. I just have one clarification I, I want to understand. Because it's in the, um, in the document. Uh, A R and B R, would that be covered on? the, um, in the document, uh, A R and B R, would that be covered under the temporary? It's sort of in the world, but not in the world. I, I don't know, would that be, would it be required to go through a temporary permitting process?
Uh, so through the chair to Councillor McNaughton, yeah, if you're talking, if, if you're audio visual or virtual reality, anything that's on a temporary, defined by art on a municipal property for a temporary period of time, which we have marked as X because we would work with everybody to determine what that timeline would be, would go through that process. Yeah. Yeah.
So, for example, um, like if, if there was going to be a virtual, if there was going to be an augmented reality project that someone implements, it, it's a little hard to capture. Um, I, I'm wondering if it's gonna, will there be challenges as far as sort of if, if there are some out in the world that are just something that you can pick up as you walk around, and um, will there be some sort of, I'm not quite sure how uh, renegade people get with, with augmented reality, but it, it has been done, and I'm just wondering to, you know, I'm presuming we won't be um, mounting a, a large sort of um, enforcement campaign in that regard. Um.
So yeah, through the chair to-
It just seems like uncharted waters.
Yeah, no, we, so, so this is, the process to govern temporary public art would be, right now, what generally happens is, is they contact the municipal property person that there, that is connected to the project. So in often cases, it's a, it's a community park, and that often lands with a staff member there, usually Richard Lightfoot, and he proceeds. Richard has no expertise to determine content, uh, and, you know, what's appropriate for the space. He's more than willing to help, as all staff members are, to support community members in public art. Uh, but that's what, what County Arts would provide is a little bit of support as far as the content and expertise goes. So every project would be, would be weighed on its own merit, including virtual and, or anything that would be augmented reality, anything like that. Our focus is entirely on, on public art. So what, what we're defining in this report is art in municipal spaces. So if, when it was touched on in municipal places, we would review whatever the contents of that uh, art would be in those specific places with County Arts and the governing board in the temporary moratorium. When we were to get to the other side of the consultation phase, we don't know what will happen because we have to go through consultation. However, most municipalities end up with a plan where there's a governing body in place, uh, that's either run by an arts council, that's run by staff members, that's run by, we, multiple different people. Usually there's expertise and community members involved, and those folks will weigh in on the content and what's appropriate at that time.
Councillor Roberts, you have your, your thoughts together?
I, I do. It could be a quick one or a long one, depends on Chris's answer. Um, Chris, in you were, you were doing the, your background stuff and pulling all this together. Did you come across, um, I think it was December last year, uh, it was a really good paper done by the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay. Did you come across that one?
I did not, no.
So it's a longer question then?
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay did a major project, uh, which they published in December twenty twenty-two about the impact of the arts and culture sector on municipalities, in particular rural municipalities. And um, it basically positioned the arts and culture in a way that it should be involved, that sector should be intimately involved in municipal plans, um, especially economic development planning. And they had five key points, and it basically concluded that uh, any discussion regarding the arts had to be tied to any discussion we had about tourism, or any discussion we had about transportation, or any, you can see where this is, where this is going. And um, they were pretty divergent um, around the stuff of getting artists to do stuff for free, you know. So we've made a few points on that, how we get kind of free labor, free consultations, free consultants. And, and that probably wasn't where this paper was going. It's uh, really going about how can we create more paid opportunities to support artists, especially in rural environments? How can we provide more of, you know, improved financial access to municipal facilities and amenities? Really about empowering income, which will then drive the sector, supposed to looking at them as a kind of a free lunch. Um, and part of the research they did is looking at municipalities that go for broke trying to attract large corporate players, you know, call centers or manufacturing entities, and it doesn't work. And if you do the comparator between the effort put into unsuccessfully getting those large corporate players versus the effort put into developing a music scene, developing an art scene, developing, you know, that kind of approach, festivals, way bigger bang for the economic investment in terms of jobs and economic spin-off restaurants, days like that. So if you have a moment, you know, or, you know, to take a look at that, it'd be great. Maybe we could chat about it sometime.
Yeah. So through the chair to Councillor Roberts, yeah, absolutely. I would take a look at that. I'm assuming somewhere Andrea's squirming in her chair because she's probably looked at that. Andrea was extremely thorough uh, in, in her research. So I can promise that all artists will be paid in the making of a public art plan. That's for sure, especially if County Arts, if that's their mandate, they ensure that that's going to be the case. So that's definitely the road that we're going to go down. Uh, but we also, our understanding of, you know, what budgets might be in place and that we might need to prove ourselves a little bit first, uh, along, along the route to make sure that the community is, is enjoying the public art that's happening and wants to continue to promote that. There would be, in the public art plan, a suggestion uh, for a municipal staff member or team to review the governing body uh, year after year to ensure that we're getting the best out of that, out of that body and that we're meeting the community needs. So the payment and, and building the econ- the economic value of public art, I think, will become very clear when we do it. There's several cities that many people, many of us have gone to. Uh, I can think of Director Lindsay has recently gone to some, and where she's come back, and all of the she's seen is murals or art. Uh, it's very extremely effective, not only as a cultural tool, but also as a marketing and promotional tool. A lot of people use public art to engage and get people to come down. They share images on their social media and through all things that promote the area very quickly. That's something that we, we've talked extensively with Visit the County about how they'd be able to support us in that regard. So, and there are also ample grant opportunities and supporting mechanisms for public art that we plan to explore. Uh, we've done a little bit of that already in the consultation phase. Generally speaking, it's a lot easier for us to find grants to support public art projects. To support legislation around a plan is a little bit difficult, is a little bit difficult. It's generally seen as the municipality's responsibility to assist with that. Where we do see uh, supporting mechanisms for the planning process is largely with uh, community groups like chambers of commerce and downtown improvement associations are all often involved because they're, they're willing to contribute a, a certain amount of their, their small budgets to help support public art in their particular area. Uh, in our, in the case of working with Mark Rose and consulting with him, uh, he really, he's really adamant to get some water fountain fillers in the downtown Picton area. And we said, what a wonderful opportunity for public art. Like, let's, why, why wouldn't we have that built into a public art, either a fountain or a different mechanism or an engaging piece of art that also includes that rather than just a metal box that spits water, which he was thrilled about. Uh, so I'm sure that we'll go further down those roads as we go. The benefit of having people like County Arts is they think that way by nature. They're creative thinkers. They're going to approach projects like that. I can think again of another example, uh, when we consulted with uh, Agduma in Charlottetown. Uh, when the hurricane had gone through, he had the wherewithal to go down and collect some of the timber that had fallen in that storm, and they're creating art out of that stim- that, out of that timber that they're going to use to place around Charlottetown. And, well, I thought that was a wonderful example of not only bringing a community together, uh, it's not, it's commemorating their, their resilience to get through something like that. Uh, but you need people of a certain creative mindset to come up with ideas like that. And we're fortunate with County Arts that they have that, but they're also more than willing to work within a budget. They're, they know that that's, that that's an expectation, and they're happy to prove themselves.
Madam CAO?
Thank you, Chair. I would just also um, remind Council and the public watching that uh, a previous report that came last month to this table was around the business retention, business expansion and retention report. Uh, that survey and, uh, an opportunity for um, uh, those in the business community of all sizes and types, uh, that survey's still open, and we're encouraging people to participate. And uh, I think that's another opportunity where, uh, we're uniquely timed for, we're building an economic development strategy, and we're building an art strategy, and we're building a park strategy, and we're doing asset management. So there's a real good um, potential to bring some synergy. And this is really, um, the arts piece is led by uh, Chris and, and the Recreation and, and Community Facilities team, but it, it is well-placed with a, a cross-departmental conversation. So I just remind everyone that, that economic development work is also happening.
Sam?
So one thing, and maybe I, I would just like a, a little clarification is that, before I skip ahead in this agenda, is that the draft outline public art plan for Prince Edward County, that is also what we're talking about right now. Perfect. So I didn't jump ahead of anybody. What I, I'd like to draw attention to, or what I thought was really interesting, um, was the section of it, which was the location slash site selection. And what I liked about this, as though there are some areas which were the big areas of Prince Edward County, are the more frequent, um, that you included cemeteries, town halls, libraries, even like Mount Tabor Theater. It's these areas that are kind of off the beaten path. And I know some of my more rural councillors will appreciate that, that we have beautiful areas all throughout Prince Edward County, and that it could create it to be more of a movement through. And I think that's what the CAO is kind of implying. So I think that's, it's really neat to be having this conversation now and connecting threads. So thank you for that.
I have Councillor Maynard and then Councillor Harrison.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It's uh, some good news. Just flipping down to the financial considerations, which isn't actually in the, in the motion, but uh, we see that the cost of forty thousand, uh, some of which will be, will come this year from a, from a bequeath, which is, uh, which is, which is nice. Um, maybe this question is, is to you, Marcia. So the, the money that will be earmarked, so, because it says we're going to enter into this agreement by this motion, will, um, will come out of the, the budget for the um, for the recreation, out of that fund. So will that be additional money in the twenty twenty-four budget for the, that capital's facility, or will it come out of the existing? I'm just saying that that, that budget is already challenged. So is it the intent to, to increase that budget to, to allow for some money for this, for this worthy project?
Through the Chair to Councillor Maynard. So um, the forty thousand is well within a director's authority, which is why we're not asking counsel. Um, I think that really depends on where we go in August with the report council's asked me to bring back, looking for three million dollars in operational savings. If, if, if the expectation is to get to that kind of reduction, that's going to impact services, and there'll be some tough choices about how that gets applied. Um, and depending how that conversation goes, you know, it could be that this is about, uh, there's always um, a certain program element in this department's budget that goes to, you know, activities or initiatives that are happening to either animate and improve our parks or our museum spaces. So there's a little bit of discretion at the director level in terms of what gets done that isn't, um, for example, at the scale of a capital project. So that is the intention here, but uh, whether or not this has to be a separate line item and added, I think will depend on the impact of the operational budget conversation we're going to have in August. But I have no concern at the dollar value that we'll be able to find this somewhere to honor this agreement, and, and I'd be quite willing to sign and, and we'll make good on this agreement one way or another. But, but we didn't see it necessarily having to be a, a separate line addition to the budget.
No, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, that it's not like, you know, that we're, that we're going to go forward. My only concern is, is what, you know, what gives or whether we just add this as a, as an additional operating, operating expense, because that department's already somewhat challenged. I do have another question. So we have some ongoing um, on, on street art installations, and I'm going to sit and talk specifically about the banner program that, in, in Consecon, which is really, you know, kind of private, but, you know, uses, it's, it is on municipal, municipal property. That can still just continue on as it is, or would that be kind of, that's something I'd like to make sure that gets, gets captured, because I know that there's new banners after the last, last winter's destruction of the banners that, that will be, that will be installed. But there's no, there's no public process to that now. It's probably, it's done privately and then installed on, on the street, to street poles.
So through the chair to Councillor Maynard, yeah, I would say, depending on the installation time and, and if everything in the report is, that's recommended goes forward, uh, we've, anything that was sort of in place was going to continue without the engagement of what we've recommended in the temporary art, uh, during the moratorium that's recommended and the, and the procedures that are recommended in the report, which are essentially to, for a committee like that, or whoever's going to put up what would be deemed as public signage or public art. Signs and art are a little bit of a mix back and forth. So it's always, it's, it's going to be a very open uh, and very collaborative effort, and there's, there's no intention to slow or stop any sort of uh, projects like that. So the recommendation would largely be to work with staff, which the folks that have the banners are already going to be doing to, I'm assuming, engage the banners in their spaces. And then, uh, if it happens after the moratorium's in effect, it's a simple connection with staff members who would then reach out to County Arts, and we would review the content of the banner, and you would go ahead with the banner unless there was something that was on the banner that was controversial or was a concern to County Arts, which is highly unlikely. Uh, and there's no cost or anything associated with that. County Arts has volunteered their time uh, during the moratorium period to support any and all of those activities, and staff will, will be notified and let know that that's the, those are the steps that need to be taken to proceed with art like that, including some of the, the art that you saw County Arts do in Benson Park. That was also a process where we learned a little bit about why we needed these steps and, and how we could get there. Uh, and it was certainly appreciated by staff members who didn't have the expertise to judge content. And for County Arts, it's a great opportunity for them to learn of activities that are happening that generally they're already aware of. Usually they're the first point of contact regardless. But when they're not, it's great because they're able to, to bring that on board and also reach out to other community members and other support mechanisms and say, hey, did you know Department of Illuminations are, are putting up a, a, a temp- piece of temporary art in the park, and we actually know of someone that might want to fund that. So it'll help create a, a community effort around public art as well.
Councillor Harrison?
Yes, you ready for a bomb? Anyway, on the topic of, uh, there's a topic here on the, I noticed on the sculpture thing, that's uh, the Sir John A. McDonald statue is very near and dear to a lot of people. It's a work of art that are, some of the historic families probably in the county more particularly than some of the newcomers. However, will there be uh, an attempt to work uh, that piece of art into the plan some way?
Madam CAO?
Thank you, Chair, to Councillor Harrison. So um, uh, as directed by council almost a year ago now, uh, we have been engaged in dialogue with the McDonald Foundation. Uh, we have a draft agreement that they have yet to sign, uh, but the intention was that it would involve returning uh, the sculpture to the McDonald Foundation so they could relocate it. And uh, it involves, that agreement also involves uh, an inspection to make sure that uh, any of the cleaning products we used did not damage uh, the sculpture, and if so, rectify that. And some other assistance we would provide within a reasonable kilometer limit to relocate the, you know, because we are currently storing it as we have an obligation under the original bylaw and agreement to protect it. So we are currently storing it, and, and we're hopeful that we can get to an agreement and move forward, uh, because the intention always was not to, to keep it in, in storage, but to uh, give it back to the McDonald Foundation so they could find a better um, home for it permanently. And I believe they have some ideas of where they want to put it. So um, we're waiting for that agreement to sign, and then that's how that would proceed.
Thank you, Madam CAO. I'm just, uh, in hearing everything here today, I just don't want this to be forgotten, and it might be- this to be forgotten. And it might be kept on a list of perhaps opportunities in, when the big picture comes in, to be able to incorporate that in, in conjunction with the foundation. And I just don't want it to go unnoticed, so to speak.
Okay. They, I, I don't think councillor Harrison, it's certainly not going to be lost on me because I, and my understanding is the reason we are here today with this public arts plan and policy recommendation is directly because of everything that occurred in our community surrounding the Johnny McDonald sculpture. So, I can assure you, I won't be forgetting about it either. So.
Thank you.
So, does anyone else have any more questions before I ask a couple? Okay, all righty. So, first of all, there were a few good, really good comments made with regards to, well, councillor Maynard, I'll go in my reverse order. With regards to banners such as were donated by, by a local group in Consecon, is that not typically considered landscaping? No different than what the Picton BIA does with the banners on Picton Main Street and therefore wouldn't necessarily be part of this?
Yes, so to the chair. If it's literally just signage and there's no art component to it, then it really wouldn't apply to the, to the public art mechanisms. I haven't seen the signs themselves, so it's hard for me to gauge without seeing them. But the staff would be able to address that and say, oh, this is just appropriate signage and that goes into place without any extenuating circumstances. If there were art and it went to a different process, the process is very, very simple and very, very quick. It would not encumber anybody to participate in it and no financial cost to do so.
Okay. No, then that, that's my concern too, because I, I look at what the Picton BIA does with its streetscaping, I should say, not landscaping, and sees some really big similarities there that I don't think necessarily need to be over-governed. So.
Through the chair, I would just say that we'll take this under advisement and make sure that our internal protocols are clear so that we don't tangle more into this than was intended. But it's a good caution.
Yeah. Councillor Branderhorst made a, made a, or maybe it was councillor Roberts talking about the economic benefits of, of the arts in any given community. And, and I do know from my experience on the Region Theatre Board way back in the nineties, that, and I know the numbers have changed considerably, but the multiplier effect of the arts, you know, and I guess on page nineteen of the report, it talks about in two thousand and nine, seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents for every dollar the city of Toronto spent. That's just an amazing economic multiplier that, that, as councillor Roberts said, you're not going to get that in, from any other industry. In the nineties, it was a dollar spent equaled seven dollars for, for stage productions for, for the dramatic arts. And I know those numbers have increased greatly. So my comment is that I think it's amazing. I think this is something that builds on what we already do well. And I think we've heard that from many, many sectors, that our economic development should concentrate on what we do well, moving forward. And this is clearly one, and for such a very tiny investment. And getting an amazing twenty-five percent donation, basically, to cover the startup costs is great. I think that's it for me. So, one question and a couple of comments. So, does anybody else have anything further? No, hearing none. Thank you very much, Chris. Extensive report, really covered a lot of things. And I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward. It's disappointing it takes so long, but sometimes good things do take effort and time. So, so I will call the motion. It's moved by councillor Hirsch and seconded by councillor Roberts. So, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So, so now we are on to item six point two. Reported the Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated July twenty-seventh regarding primary care infrastructure working group terms of reference. And we have Director Cowan here. I will, before I ask for the motion to be put on the floor, I'll ask you, is there anything you wish to add to the report or comments that you'd like to make?
Sure, through the chair to the committee. Just a brief summary, if it's helpful. In January, council directed staff to develop a terms of reference for a county-led working group to address issues and opportunities beyond the scope of the Preserve Family Health Team and the county docs. Staff have prepared terms of reference directing the working group to focus on the urgent local issue of primary care infrastructure, which is housing and office space. So, physical space solutions. Staff sort of consider this working group to be a lot like the County Road Forty-Nine Working Group. And as you've heard over the last few weeks, there are a lot of different groups dealing with a lot of the different barriers that we have right now to healthcare provision in the county. And this working group is aiming to tackle the sort of the remaining gaps that exist. And that is the physical space requirements that we need in terms of housing and office space. You can kind of see the, the gaps and how they are being, or the barriers and how they're being addressed by different groups in the table within the report, which I think is a, is a great way of illustrating sort of who's working on what and what that's meant to achieve. And then the scope and the terms of reference is for the group to assess infrastructure needs, assess short-term primary care provider housing needs, explore funding and partnership opportunities, and then recommend solutions to council.
Okay. Questions? Sorry, I need to put the motion on the floor if we're done with that. So I need a mover and a seconder to place the motion on the floor with one minor amendment to item three in that Mayor Ferguson's name to be stricken from paragraph three. I see the clerk's hand up in the air.
Through the chair, if I could just suggest that we go ahead and ask questions and open nominations so that we can do the final motion altogether when nominations have closed with the three or two names to be appointed.
Okay, yes, I see that the motion doesn't necessarily match the process that we should be going through. Okay. So, questions for Director Cowan? Mayor Ferguson?
Clarify the announcement that's already been made. Just for the benefit of, of council, I spoke about this some time ago, but just for everybody's knowledge, the physician recruitment team has formed what is called a DAM, which is the Doctor Accommodation Network, which is a, for lack of a better term, a collective of accommodation that is going to be offered to locums or physicians as they come in. And a number of properties have already been, joined that group. Also, the family health team was represented at the expression of interest meetings at, that were held last week concerning space allocations and at the Queen Elizabeth School property. So I, I, you know, I'm already on multiple committees. I, I think this is redundant, so I would like to forfeit my position and allow another councillor to, to participate in this if its councils will let this proceed. So, hence the need for nominations if necessary.
And it was not my intention to steal your thunder on that, your worship.
This wasn't thunder.
Okay, yeah. You, you mentioned it prior to the meeting. The clerk was aware of it, so I thought I'd actually put that out there. So, anyways. Did I see your hand go up, councillor McNaughton? Yes, okay.
You did. I did have a similar question, whether it's become redundant, because as it's outlined in this report, we've, we've heard about a couple of new developments. I did have a conversation with the CAO several weeks back about whether the bases are being covered adequately and what bases remain. And I would like to, to sort of hear her rationale about that. Thanks.
Madam CAO?
Thank you. Through the chair to councillor McNaughton. So, council gave us a motion to bring back a report and we have done what council's asked. So, regardless of whether or not council decides this is no longer necessary, it's not my decision to decide to not bring it forward. That being said, staff did a thorough analysis of all the different initiatives and they believe that the, the physical space piece, while perhaps being discussed at other tables, isn't as, isn't the focus of any group. And that if you wanted to set one, this task team up as a subgroup of council, that focusing on buildings, particularly new location for office space needs, because we know the lease is going to be up for the Bridge Street location. And so, we see that as still a viable purpose for this group. So, that is why it's here in front of you and we'll take direction from council either way.
Follow.
Thank, thank you, yes. Just, just briefly, okay, so that, that is, that provides some comfort. This might actually perhaps not be a very long-lived group. It might be, sort of it's easier to see it as an ad hoc group to determine whether those, determine which activity remains to be undertaken and potentially completed within a short period of time. Thanks.
Under the term, yeah, you're right councillor McNaughton, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six or earlier, should the group feel their work is no longer necessary.
Yes, or earlier.
Councillor Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In a similar vein, and maybe Marcia, you have an answer to this. Would, part of that consideration of other accommodation space include looking at the, hopefully to be former HJ McFarland Home Building and the, the former hospital as, as potential spaces? Or do people like Chuck Dowdell have that well enough in hand without this group being involved?
Through the chair to councillor Hirsch. We see this task team functioning the way the County Forty-Nine Group does. So it is not staff doing the work reporting into this group. It's recognizing that perhaps a subset of council would be effective to achieve an outcome in partnership with staff and others in the community to make something happen. So, you know, what is the future of the current HJ McFarland Home? Absolutely. That will be a staff-initiated project and will come forward regardless of whether we have this group or not. So, this group really would need to be focused on, is there something that a subset of council and, and the membership as outlined could achieve outside of what we are already doing through our normal operational practices and, and what comes to council? I think that's really how to see this. It is not a working group of an existing advisory committee, it's a working group of council. And I would say, the County Road Forty-Nine is a good example that, but in the previous term of council, there was a couple of councillors who worked in partnership with staff, which eventually turned into the sale of the convenience store in Wellington. It, it's akin to that, where, you know, councillors leaning in to achieve something that might require extraordinary solutions and brainstorming outside of normal processes might achieve something that wouldn't otherwise happen. But the things that would normally otherwise happen that we are working on as staff in the housing department or elsewhere will continue to happen regardless.
I'm just wondering if council wants to have the actual discussion, should this group go forward or not, and, and have, like, have that discussion on the floor? Before there's a selection or?
So, through the chair if I may, why don't we separate the motions? So you vote on one to receive and then you can vote on two. And then that way you're having that fulsome discussion on whether this, there's a need for this. And then if it's approved, we can go to the third, which is the election of officers to serve.
See, I was giving others mic time and I shut mine off. Councillor, councillor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, I, I'm just kind of, like, I have no problem if we, this committee don't go forward. But I guess I'm just thinking back to when we met with the doctors group. They outlined to councillor McNaughton and councillor Brandon Hurst, problems they were having. Then when they came to council, they reiterated those problems. And they were all for this group. So, I guess, and I understand what staff is saying, but I guess for me, maybe what we could do is, could we refer this to a future meeting to have maybe a conversation with those, that group, the doctors, to see if it's still needed. Because they were the ones that indicated that they, yes, they need help. And staff is saying, now that everything's under control, I guess I just need to hear it from, and it's not that I don't believe what's being said here. It just, I, you know, it's nice to hear from the people that's doing the work.
Okay. So, firstly, I, I think we should follow the procedures the clerk is suggesting to start with and then we, let's have that conversation. Yeah. So, the first, breaking six point two down, I need a mover and seconder for part one, that council received the report. Mover and seconder, councillor McNaughton, councillor Roberts.
That council received report CSP twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. All in favor? That's carried. So, I believe your, your suggestions councillor Nyman come under number two. So I need to have that put on the floor first. Councillor Nyman? We, section two is with regards to approving the terms of reference. If council, if committee chooses not to approve the terms of reference, then this working group dies. But that's where we're at. So that's why I'm saying this is the appropriate time to discuss.
Please let me put it on the floor.
Yeah. I just want to get the motion on the floor. Secondly, by councillor McNaughton. Yes, please.
That the primary care infrastructure working group terms of reference be approved.
Yeah. Before I call the motion, does anybody else wish to tie? And I have, I saw your hand go up councillor Maynard, so if you want to speak then, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, if there's anybody that would like to sit, I think that this could still have some, some benefit, right? That although we've had some positive news that might, might give us some space, I'd like to think that we, you know, that it might not hurt to keep looking. I mean, you know, we've got, we likely have some spaces now in Picton, but there's also, you know, the consideration for Wellington and for, and for Rossmore, all of that had, you know, either had or do have medical facilities. So, I don't see the harm in having, you know, having a committee at least look and see if they can find, you know, if there's any other spots out there other than, other than what may come free and maybe freed up in, in Picton.
Director Cowan, you wish to? Director Cowan, please go ahead.
Through the chair to councillor Nyman and councillor Maynard. So, I will just mention that we have, as we've been building this framework terms of reference and writing this report, we have been speaking with, with doctors and the other stakeholders that are involved in, in primary care. And really what they require are short-term solutions. So, Queen Elizabeth School and HJ McFarland are solutions perhaps in the future, but it's a long way in the future. So, there, to staff, there is certainly, we believe, some work that can be done to find some short-term solutions to particularly office space, but I'm sure housing would never ever be turned down either. And so that's just something I wanted to mention to you as you have this discussion.
Yeah. Okay. I, I have a list. So, councillor Nyman, you're up next.
Thank you. And thank you, Emily. So, So I'm just trying to put together what you just said. So you've talked with the doctors and from what I'm understanding is this group could still be used to find short-term solutions for the buildings and housing and whatnot. Okay, then I'm good with that. I know what I'm doing.
Okay. Counsel Branderhorst, followed by Counsel Harrison.
I'm just, can I ask for a potential straw poll of any council? Nope. Is there any counselors around the table that are interested in being in this group and have time for it before we approve or not approve this? Can that happen?
I'm going to make an executive decision and say that's a very valid question. Because to go through all the debate of part two, to get to part three is kind of redundant if nobody's really interested in doing this. So if there has been a rethink about whether it's necessary or if anybody wants to do this, so very good question, Counsel Branderhorst. So having said that, I'm going to flip it around here. It's awkward, I know. Sorry, Madam Clerk, we're giving you migraines.
Do we, just, so if we're not going to do, sorry, through the Chair, if we're not going to do a straw poll, but we're just going, she asked her question, could it just be around if there is interest to serve?
Yes.
Just in general, and anyone speak to it?
Okay.
Just to speak to it in general? Because if we flip, we're going to appoint people before we actually officially created a working group. We don't have to make this so complicated.
I know, trying not to.
I know.
And again, I don't want to give you any migraines, so. Okay. Counsel Harrison, then Counsel McNaughton, and then we will move forward. Okay.
This is a question. Is there any merit in perhaps deferring this for a meeting? There seems to be some confusion on the need. Is there any merit in that? Or what's the feeling of council?
Yeah. Okay, I'm just, I'll start and work around the table. Counsel Harrison's asked a very good question. Counsel Pennell. Then, sorry, I better start here with Counsel McNaughton and then go around.
There we go. I think I'm on. That's okay. Yeah, it's something I'd be interested in. So there's, I think there's certainly some interest. One of the considerations I found out afterwards is the Dan network primarily represents only one particular type of professional. And, you know, if we're looking at potential future housing solutions for nurse practitioners and other ancillary healthcare providers that are critical to this community's delivery and receipt of healthcare services, I think that's a piece that's not quite being understood yet. So just for that alone, even if it's something that's, you know, only a temporary effort that lasts a year, year and a half to determine what the needs are and whether we can assist with that, yeah, I'd be very interested to see this go forward.
Okay, Counsel Pennell.
As far as I'm concerned, we can defer all we want. If we want to take a serious look at it, let's get at it and get it done. I hear all the time that we defer stuff and it goes on and sometimes never gets done. And this is one time I think we got to stand up and prove to the public that we as the council support, in particular, our medical forces that we so badly need in this county. And if we don't start standing up, we may get even worse. So that's my thoughts.
So are you stating that you would be interested in being on the working group? Okay. Spoken like a true politician.
Let's put it this way. If there was enough to come up to the plate to do it, I'd be more than glad to not do it. But I feel it's that important to this county that we come down to the point. But I believe I have a fellow counselor that's willing to do.
Okay, again, I'm going to go around the table. Counsel Grosso.
I'd be totally into helping that out, to be part of the group.
Okay. Counsel Niman.
So seeing as how the mayor is not participating in this, I'd be willing to help or be on this. And just go back to my other question. Emily has answered that, that yes, this group is needed, is what my understanding was. So yes, the group is needed and yes, I would be interested in it.
Okay, Counsel Roberts.
Well, I'm just very supportive of the passionate council colleagues who are already keen on being on the working group, especially recognizing our diverse primary healthcare needs and including nurse practitioners in that. So I'm already in my own personal track with regard to some of that activity off the corner of my own desk. So I would gladly, you know, just pass on this one.
Counsel Maynard?
Supportive of the committee, but no thank you to sitting.
Good. Pass. Counsel Hirsch.
It's a no for me.
Yeah. To clarify, my Dan's card's rather full, so.
Supportive of the committee, but I'd pass on being on the group.
Yeah. I believe we've heard from Mayor Ferguson, unless you wish to add anything more? Okay, Counsel Harrison?
I have to pass.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I think.
Counsel Robert.
Just my willing to serve.
Now the close nomination.
So, okay, so I think in a roundabout way, and I know it's not necessarily procedurally correct what we did, Madam Clerk. But, so I'm going to say we do have a motion on the floor with regards to establishing and approving the terms of reference. Question?
I was just going to say, when you're in this discussion, that I will gladly back off because I feel there's several counselors that'll do the job that I'm looking for and I'm quite happy to back down.
Okay, so I'm going to call the motion with regards to approving the working group terms of reference. So all in favor? That's carried. So now, based on my notes going around the table in a kind of a backwards way, that there are three members of council, this committee, I should say, that are willing to put their names forward. So I am going to, do I need to call an election? Because I think we just, we have three volunteers.
To the Chair, yes, we do. Could you just make sure you still open the floor and say that those three people would like to serve? And just please go through the process still.
Okay. Counsel McNaughton, do you wish to serve on this working group? Yes or no?
Yes. And also, is your intention to create the third spot?
Yes, yes. I believe I heard from Counsel Grosso, but I'll get it on the record again. You are willing to sit on this working group?
100%.
Okay. Counsel Niman, reiterate?
Yes, there's three spots, right?
There are three spots.
Okay, so yes.
Is there anybody else that wishes to sit on this working group? Seeing none, I will close those nominations. He's looking to make a motion and move it along. Okay, so we have Counsel McNaughton, Counsel Grosso, and Counsel Niman. As, like I say, nominations are closed. So therefore, the motion now reads that Counsel McNaughton, Counsel Grosso, Counsel Niman be appointed to the Primary Care Infrastructure Working Group. Could I have a mover and seconder? And I think I'm going to, Counsel Pennell, you're the mover. Counsel Roberts, seconder. I've read the motion, so I don't think we need to belabor it anymore. All in favor? That's carried.
Congratulations.
Okay. Sometimes it is better to just break out the motions. No. Are you getting any of my time? I think my batteries are going, they're brand new. It's starting to get lower. Five-minute recess, just to give everybody a chance to get a drink of water or whatever it is they want to do.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting back to order. After a small environmental and refreshment break for some. So we are now at item 6.3 on the agenda, report of Corporate Legislative Services Department dated July 27, 2023 regarding partnership and climate change program milestone one. Erin, Director, please go ahead.
Through the chair, to members of council. So this is a for information report, basically on the partnership and climate change program. We were successful in completing milestone number one. That's basically creating an emissions inventory. And I must give credit to Angela McCullough because I think she probably compiled and entered 10,000 pieces of data from 2018 to 2023, and it was an amazing feat. It took about four months to do and then vet the data, work with the different departments. So we got some pretty good information overall. Now that we have that information, that information is in the form of charts within the report, but you could clearly see how COVID affected our energy usage. And then the rest of the information has went to their departments just within the last few weeks, just so that they can analyze the data at a much deeper level. I think I was reading a little bit earlier that July, I think, is standing to be the hottest hottest month on record. So I think this couldn't come at a better time. So we've completed milestone number one, which is a great feat. Now we're moving on to milestone number two of the program, which is setting emissions targets. So through the Green Task Force, we've sent information to the different departments so that they put the topic on their agendas and that so that it starts the conversations. So over the next two or three months, the departments will have the conversation about what they think they can decrease in terms of energy usage. And out of that, over the next year or four months, we'll come up with a target, work with the EAC on that, and then we'll have specific targets related to the areas. And then we'll also have an overall target. That information will come to council. It'll also be collaborated with the EAC. And then what we'll do is we'll get council to pass a resolution accepting that target. And then we'll move on to the action plan phase and then the implementation of the action plan. And then through milestone number five, we're going to be monitoring our action plan. And I should highlight the fact that through the Electricity Act, we're required to create an energy management plan, which we currently have, a five-year energy management plan. That plan will work in conjunction with the PCP program and the action plan and the different targets we set. And that's due July of next year. So there's a lot of moving parts. We have the Green Task Force, we have the Energy Management Plan, and then we have the PCP program, which which is on the floor this afternoon. And then we have the EAC as a separate group, hopefully collaborating and working towards the same end. So with that, it's quite exciting. We're making progress. And now more than ever is the time that I think we need to make progress on on energy initiatives. And it's nice that the EV report is next, so that sort of ties in. And quite frankly, the this report ties into the asset management plan, the strategic asset management plan, the strategic plan, and a number of other policies and plans within the corporation. It's trying to build that culture within the corporation and sort of do our part. And at the same time, there's money to be saved. So one side, we have the environmental side, and then the other side is the amount of energy that we can save by doing things smarter, by implementing certain measures. And that in part will form part of our overall action plan. And then obviously, this will be reported to council throughout the whole process. So and with that, I'll just maybe open the floor up for questions.
Thank you. The McNotton panel motion that council received report CLS 172022 for information. 323, pardon me. I'd like to start with compliments. So I really want to appreciate the work that's gone into this. And and I would I would echo your your comments about Angela McCullough. I've reviewed her data, and it's a shocking amount. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around what I have read. And that's only I've only actually reviewed a portion. So and and it's been interesting to see how flexible, sort of how much you can sort of sort of filter that data to understand different pieces and compare year to year, pages and pages and pages and pages of data. I also want to thank, I also want to just give a shout out to Jane Leslie, who's the former Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee, who really championed this program because one of the principles of the Environmental Advisory Committee was that we have to be able to understand what we're dealing with in order to move forward. What gets what gets measured, gets managed, was one of our key phrases over and over and over again. So as as champion, she was very effective at like reviewing several programs. And this one was a key sort of a key choice. And I would also like to thank Erin's group, Director McNichols' group, for the methodical approach that they're taking. And also, this isn't just a great sort of a great little, a great win in our first step, but it's also a great example of that cross-departmental collaboration that the last term of council was so desired so deeply to see. We're seeing it now, and we're seeing a really great coming together of wonderful staff members from different departments, really putting passion and energy into solving solving sort of big problems we could never have solved before our municipalities started sort of undertaking a change in how we approach things. And I'm very impressed at the effort that's gone in and how that effort has has come about. So thanks to thanks to yourself, thanks to Cao Wallace. And and I also, I am also curious about some of the numbers. But and so maybe I can ask you about some of the numbers. Am I still on time? So.
Oh, I was looking forward to a question.
Yeah, well, there you go. So some of the numbers sort of let us see where some of the sort of growing problems are and where some of the shrinking problems are, where you see certain areas contract and certain areas of energy consumption expand. And I'm really interested in, you know, certainly, we see some positive motion in areas, but some distinct weakness in in the transportation, the vehicles section, or sort of trending, numbers trending, where we can make a lot of change and do a lot of work. And I'm just wondering if the waste numbers, which is an area where we see expanding energy consumption, if if a lot of that is also due to vehicles.
Through the chair, to Councilor McNotton. So we haven't, we haven't done a deep dive into the data. The data we only received about, I guess, three or four, three or four weeks ago. And that has been sent in to the departments to basically review and look at. And I sort of did a year-over-year percentage change. And I think what I was, what highlighted for me was the fact that COVID had changed everything. And that was easy to see in the trend. Vehicles are completely separate from water and wastewater. That is basically the the pumping stations and and the water tower and all of that sort of stuff. That doesn't include fleet. So it's tough to compare. And with fleet, we didn't have 2018's data. We only had 2019, 2020, and 2021. And we had such a wonky couple of years. I think I'm waiting for 2023's numbers to come in. And then we're going to at least be able to see 2019's comparison. And then we've got 2022, which was part of COVID still. And then we'll have 2023. So I think the numbers will start to shake out in all areas once we get a full year of non-COVID in. And then we had 2019 of not a full year of non-COVID. And then we'll be able to identify some of the trends. We did pick up some isolated outliers in some of the data that Angela investigated and we've corrected. But overall, I'd say the only thing that really pops out to me is basically COVID. And again, the departments haven't gotten back to us quite yet with some of their analysis. But but there's not a whole lot of variation I don't see in the regular years. But and one thing I will highlight in 2020, when we went to LED streetlights, you can see the slight decrease from 2021 onward. So you can see that. So that was sort of reassuring that we can implement a project and you can immediately see some savings in GHG emissions. And then it's, it's, you know, you can see year-over-year that. So that's sort of reassuring and exciting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Councilor Director McNichol? No? Okay. I guess I'll finish with a comment that, yes, thank you very much. All the hard work that's gone into this. And I think, I think it proves to us that we will be able to do this. We can do this, we should do this. And yeah, when you when you mentioned these streetlights particularly, that's a that's a great example of an investment returning to us many, many times and being of a great benefit to help reduce GHGs and just make us a more environmentally friendly community. Saves money, fantastic idea. And I look forward to seeing many more suggestions like that coming from staff, the Environmental Advisory Committee, et cetera. And I do agree with you, Mr. Director McNichol. COVID is a glitch, and you need to almost ignore those numbers because they they are such an anomaly. The same thing is occurring in, I'll say, retail sectors and other businesses in, you know, parts of our economy. People are thinking what I did last year. Well, what happened in 20 and 21? You need to just throw that outside and think, forget those two years happened even though that's never going to happen. So I very, and I look forward to the opportunities of having this PCP program in place through through FCM and potential grant funding to to assist us to move forward with this as well as implement some things. So I see this as a win-win. It's really, really good and look forward to the next milestone. So anyways. Who did I have as movers and seconders?
Councilor McNotton and Councilor Pennell.
Okay, so that's a motion to receive the report. So all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And now continuing on in the charging forward in the vein of environmental issues and in this case, EV chargers. So welcome, Julianne. So this is a report on Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated July 27 regarding electric vehicle charging implementation phase one. So Julianne, floor is yours.
Thank you. Through the chair, to the members of council. Pleased to be here to speak about electric vehicle charging infrastructure and our first steps in putting some chargers in the ground in Prince Edward County. This is being brought for your consideration today because it is an in-year capital project that hasn't been considered as part of the capital budget, but it is fully funded by a private sector grant. And there are some bylaw and policy considerations that would need to be addressed in order to implement the electric vehicle charging program as outlined in the report. So we'll talk about that today. But before we get started, I did want to add some new information and clarify something that was in the report. In the other options considered section, I noted some concern from the Bloomfield Area Business Association about the plan as presented in this report. And at the time of publishing, they had expressed their concern about the type of charger that would be put in that location, as well as the length of time that would be permitted to be used for parking electric vehicle in that space. So I noted it in the report, but subsequent to that, I've had the opportunity to talk in more detail to some of the folks who were most concerned with the plan. And in talking through the different variables and the context, they're satisfied with the plan. And they they no longer have opposition to it. They're happy, and they'd be happy to receive the Level 2 charger in that parking lot. And I told them that I would convey that information to you verbally before we considered the report. So I just wanted to add that. And now I'm here and ready for any questions you might have.
Okay. I need motions put on the floor. Do you need to break any of this up, Madam Clerk, given that there are six sections to this motion? No? Okay. So I need a mover and seconder to Councilor Brandhorst and Councilor McNotton. Please read the entire motion.
This is a Brandon Horst McNotton motion that council received report CSP-20-2023 that council approved the installation of Level 2 electric vehicle charging infrastructure in the Wellington and District Community Center Parking Lot, two chargers requiring two parking spaces. The Prince Edward Community Center Parking Lot, two chargers requiring two parking spaces. In the Bloomfield Parking Lot, one charger requiring one space. That council approve amending schedule N to the parking bylaws 75-2021 as amended designating the required parking spaces for electric vehicle charging only, limiting use of these parking spaces for electric vehicles that are actively charging and setting a maximum length of time parked in these electric vehicle spaces to four, four hours. That council approve amending bylaw 4519-2019 being the administrative money penalty's bylaw to include the penalty for misuse of an electric vehicle charging parking space. That a schedule be added to the 202 for fees and charges bylaw at the next annual update to establish the rate for electric charging. And that council authorize the treasurer to establish a reserve for electric vehicle charging and that surplus funds would be deposited to for future capital replacement and expansion or repairs extending the useful life of these assets.
Thank you very much. Now you can catch your breath, Councilor Brandhorst. So any questions for, okay, Councilor Nyman, Councilor Harrison, and then Councilor Pennell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a thing I read it in there, and you might have already said it, but this is fully funded through a grant. So it's not going to cost us nothing to install them. But the upkeep will be, there will be a charge or, I guess, maintenance. And what's the expected cost of maintenance on these?
Through the chair, to Councilor Nyman. Yes, the capital aspects of the project are fully funded through the Earth Day Canada Grant, which would include also any staff time that would be required to facilitate the capital parts of the project. And then the ongoing operating considerations are detailed in the report. It's intended to be user fee supported. So the fees that would be charged to the electric vehicle drivers who are accessing the equipment would cover the ongoing costs, such as the electricity that's used, the networking charges, access to the web-based portal for administering the technology, as well as the ongoing customer service plan that's offered by the supplier. So the, through the capital project, there would be the warranty that would be purchased that would cover the machines. I believe it's up to five years with the machines that we're considering. And then the ongoing program guarantees a 90%, 98% uptime. So anything covered under warranty would be done by the supplier. It's estimated to be about a $3,000 a year operating cost that would be recovered through the user fees.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that. So one other quick question is, so we're taking two parking spots from the Bloomfield Parking Lot. Only one?
Yeah, through the chair, Councilor Nyman. It's just one in the Bloomfield Lot.
Okay. So I know electric vehicles are the way that we're supposed to be going, but I don't think that's going to happen. But is there any, taking the way the parking spots and parking seems to be a premium in Bloomfield, is there any other? taking the way the parking spots and parking seems to be a premium in Bloomfield, is there any other places that we're going to be able to make those parking spots back? I know you probably can't, let's just want to put that out there just in case.
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Nyman. It's sort of outside the scope of the report to find alternate parking locations within the village of Bloomfield. I don't know if the CAO has anything to offer.
Through the chair to Counselor Nyman. I would just say that we regularly get complaints that we do not have electric vehicle spots in the highest tourist areas of our community. And that is partly why Bloomfield and Wellington are being chosen as locations. There is no intention to find an alternative replacement. Frankly, the conversation about whether or not we have adequate parking in those areas requires a, a much bigger analysis about whether or not we take on additional land to, to make a parking spot. So this would be not, unlike the bus shelter that took out a parking spot, this is about just targeting what kind of parking it's intended to be. So we don't see it as a decrease of parking spots, but more similar to a disability spot. It is confirming that there will be one for somebody should they come with an electric vehicle.
Just wanted to plant that seed, that's all.
Okay. Counselor Harrison and then Counselor Pennell.
So my understanding, when you buy a new electric vehicle, they're equipped to charge at home, is that correct? So as was mentioned earlier, this is probably mainly for tourism traffic. It seems to me, I don't know what's on the horizon, maybe you can answer that question. Or maybe I should phrase it this way. We've got that, say in Bloomfield, we've got the one spot, right? And it can be taken up by one car for up to four hours. Is that correct? That seems rather inefficient to me with the, the growth of, of the electric vehicle market. Is there technology on the horizon, for example, where it might only take, say, 15 minutes to have a charge? And can that site be adapted to new technology? In other words, so the turnover would be much greater, like filling up the gas station almost sort of thing?
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Harrison. Thanks for the question. There is fast, the, the grant funding we received is for level two charging. And so that's the charging that would require multiple hours to top up a vehicle so it could travel to the next fast charging location. But there are faster chargers available on the market currently and they continue to innovate that technology and get faster and faster. So a level three DCFC charger would do the same that a level two would do in 20 minutes, where it would take two hours with a level two. The difference between level two and level three is a level three is exceedingly expensive to install. It's very expensive technology. And so with the funding that we have, it's specifically for level twos and that's what we're proposing installing. However, it could be noted that when the bus shelter was installed in the Bloomfield Parking Lot, the electrical service that was supplied to that parking lot is sufficient to host a level three charger. And if we wanted to in the future, replace the level two with a faster level three in that location, that is possible with the electrical service that was put in at that lot.
Would it not be more efficient in long run than, for example, in Wellington where you're going to put two, to just put one level three? You'd turn them over faster, I would think it would be.
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Harrison. It is faster technology. It is more efficient for the driver. It is more expensive and it's, we don't have funding for that type of technology right now. We are looking at a model that would involve private sector partnership that would allow us to bring level three charging to the county sometime in the future. In this model, the supplier, the manufacturer of the electric vehicle charging infrastructure would pay all of the capital costs to install that equipment. And it would be like a land lease agreement with us where they would give us revenue to be able to operate that. There are a couple other private sector entities, gas stations or big box stores that may be installing the faster level three charging in the near future. But that infrastructure, we believe, is no sooner than a year away. And we have an opportunity now using third-party funds to install the level two so that we have a solution in the community in the very near term.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor Pennell, followed by Mayor Ferguson and then Counselor McNaughton and then Counselor Hirsch.
Yeah, I expressed my concern the other night about having these parking spots for electrical vehicles at the two arenas. Because my, my honest feeling is they should be located closer to the downtown. For instance, in Wellington, if somebody's got to park their car for four hours, I'd like to think they're going to be shopping and that in the downtown. I realize there's locals that have vehicle, but I know of a couple seniors that have vehicle. Once again, I don't think they want to go to the arena and sit for four hours, get their. But having said that, I'm thoroughly convinced by the time we get them in, they're going to be so outdated, it's not funny. I read this morning, General Motors, Ford and all these places are all coming out with their own. They're going to be begging municipalities to let them, put them in in the future and pay the municipalities to have them because they want part of that market. So for now, I, I don't think it matters where we put them because I'm thoroughly convinced that by the time they're in there, they're going to be so outdated, it won't be funny. Why are you going to go for a four hour if you can get a? And the people that are traveling, using it, the dollars and cents don't make that much difference. So I think if we move ahead with these that are, are being donated, basically, that in the future, before we get any ideas of expanding our own system, perhaps we should be going to General Motors and Ford in these places. See if they will give the county more money in the future that we can use on roads or whatever. Just by that.
Mayor Ferguson, Counselor McNaughton, and then Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this, this technology is going to evolve very quickly, I think. So we'll take advantage of this grant opportunity. But I've got a question about that thing on King Street. That is, it really sends the wrong impression. Is there any way we can use that infrastructure? Is it a matter of just replacing the charger and putting another one in there? I mean, it's an ideal opportunity to generate a little bit of revenue and make it look, make us look a little more au courant than having a green garbage bag over the top of it. So is there anything we can do about that?
Through the chair to the mayor. Thank you for bringing up the black bag elephant in the room. Yes, the charger on King Street, that particular piece of machinery has lived out its lifecycle. There's no support and no parts available to repair that machine. So the machine needs to be removed or fully replaced. That one was a level three DCFC fast charger. So to replace it, we're looking at about $100,000, between 75 and $100,000 to replace that machine. And we, our, what, what staff is contemplating right now for that particular parking lot is to reserve that lot for a future level three installation, one that we would hope to develop in partnership with a private corporation. And that, that's an ideal location for the level three charging installation to go. So that's how we're sort of viewing that lot right now. Yep.
Quick follow-up. So the, the, the machine itself has to sit there. You can't take the machine off and effectively put some giant murets on, on the, the wires and bury it under asphalt or something? Anything to remove it?
Through the chair to the, to the mayor. We, I will talk with my colleagues about what can be done to remove the machine, what the costs and what the electrical work would need to be to cap it off and.
Or an art installation.
Are you suggesting we put a box over it and have it decorated? Okay, I have Counselor McNaughton, followed by Counselor Hirsch and then Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. I have a number of questions. And I'll only do a couple respectfully. And I just, I, I'm, I think, I'm very impressed because I think you've turned into an expert very quickly. And you've had to, you know, sort of, yeah, suddenly become the municipal expert in EV charging. So I think you've answered a couple of my questions. So one of my questions related to whether that level two, I was very concerned about Baba's preference because of course I think that's a sensible preference. What I'm understanding from your answer to Counselor Harrison is that when there's, when that fleshed out countywide plan for, for level three chargers is activated, that that one could be switched out. Is that technology then something we can easily transfer? The level two technology, is that something that, will the, the equipment from the level two chargers at that point be able to be transferred to, for example, works yards? Or parks and wreck, parking areas, for example?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton. In, yeah, in this scenario where we could upgrade the equipment in the Bloomfield Lot or any of the other locations receiving a level two at this time, that, those machines could be relocated to other suitable applications in the community. Yep.
Okay. And may I continue with the second one?
True, one more, because I've got a couple other people that need to get in.
So my next question, now you mentioned a couple of times that the, the idea is that this is a self-maintaining program. And the replace and replacement costs and repair costs are included. Did you, are you thinking in terms of full replacement cost for a full, for the full complement of chargers? Or over time? Or is, is that what's conceived of? Or is it an as-needed like replacement? Oh, if one's faulty and we're just out of warranty after five years, then there's, there'll be at least some money. Like, are you thinking full replacement? Or have you got that? Or is that plan fully fleshed out yet?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton. A, a full strategic, long-term electric vehicle charging infrastructure plan is not developed at this point. That plan would need to consider regional considerations, what the private sector might be doing, future fleet electrification. So there's a lot that would go into a longer-term strategic plan. For the time being, with the, the grant opportunity that we have to put some equipment in the ground at this time, we've attempted to develop a business model for it that would pay for that equipment. And any net revenues would be put into the reserve so that we could repair and replace on an as-needed basis. It starts to establish the tools that we would need to build towards a longer.
And, and essentially act as a trial to see if, if it's, if it needs to be reconsidered in the future. Okay, that's very good.
Through the chair, yes.
Madam CAO?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton. I would just also draw the parallel that Director McNichol did in these two reports. Milestone three involves a plan that is about energy reduction and climate change mitigation. And, and so through that sustainability plan, we can also flush out what is our piece of the broader business, public sector partnership to deliver public charging in our, in our economy. So I, I think that the timing of this works really well, that should council support this short-term initiative. The longer-term initiative has a, a way to connect it to some of the other initiatives.
Which is where I'm kind of going in my list of questions. I'm really excited. I'll wait my turn though.
Yep.
Because I see the chair's eye upon me.
No, I have two others who wish to speak and there may be more. So Counselor Hirsch, then Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Julianne, obviously, yes, it's a good idea for giving us the level twos for free. We should take them. But that's not what the public wants. The public wants the level three chargers. In fact, we have, we have private business in the counties installing their own charger. Some of the, the more popular Airbnbs and, and accommodators are recognizing their customers need them. So they're putting chargers in. So the level three program, we've mentioned this several times. Could you explain where we're at on that? And why does it take so much time to, to get this to happen? Because it is a thing now of, of companies providing them at no cost, no capital cost to us. We just have to say, here's a piece of land you can put it on. So if you could let us know where that's at and what timeframe we might be looking at, it'd be great.
Through the chair to Counselor Hirsch. Thank you for the question. Yes, so the, the partnership with the private sector to install level three charging in our community, we began the process of exploring what procurement for that would look like and working with the finance department to understand how we would go about negotiating that type of relationship. And we got a little bit down that road and then we received this funding for the level two project. So that has taken the focus of the team who were working on the electric vehicle file. But we are looking forward to getting back on track with the level three conversation as soon as we move forward with this, if we do. We know of a number of suppliers who are interested in working in that, in that way. And we've, I attended a conference back in the spring where I met some people who are playing in that field. And the sense I got from some of those conversations is it may not be easy, it may not be a slam dunk, but it's definitely a model that's worth pursuing. So we're going to keep on that. And I don't have a timeline for when we would come back with a proposal related to that. But it'll capture our attention when we're done with this one.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. Just wanting a bit of clarification, or perhaps it's just education from staff. Aviva is an insurance company. And if there's any place where they are very good at working numbers and doing predictions, it's when you're, half your staff is, are auditors and actuaries. And they're looking at these level two in terms of their investment until at least 2026. So they seem to be comfortable as actuaries that 2026 is viable and beyond that. That's question one, kind of. Also, that's, we were pretty lucky, weren't we? There was only six municipalities that were favored by this Aviva investment. Okay, that's another one. And the other thing that I, I guess is a factor is the level two to level three jump is roughly 200 times. So a level three costs about 200 times a level two. So that's, that's what I'm reading anyways. All of these things true?
Through the chair to Counselor Roberts. Yes, yes, and yes. So just for some context, Aviva is the financial sponsor of the Earth Day Canada Grant. So the money for that program is coming from Aviva Insurance. And yes, we were one of six communities that were chosen for this. This is the first time that they are offering this funding program. And when we began talking with the program manager, they were very excited about our community because we are a blackout zone for electric vehicle charging currently and because of our status as a tourism destination and the large geography of our community. So we were very lucky, yes, to receive the funding.
Thanks.
Counselor Grasso?
I think this is an electrifying idea. It's going to put a jolt in our tourism. And I would suggest, I would suggest a station in the north end of the county. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Still on round one, anyone else wish to jump in before I go back to Counselor McNaughton for one or two more questions? Nope? Okay, Counselor McNaughton.
Thanks. So actually, one of them got answered. It was sort of touching on the long-term plan with the, there's no, there's no flesh on the bones in this report on what that timeline is. And that's to be determined quite quickly, provided, you know, depending on maybe the outcome of this conversation, you'll get a better picture within the next several months, perhaps. the outcome of this conversation, you'll get a better picture within the next several months, perhaps. And, well, I'll let you answer that, yeah.
Through the chair to Counsel McNaughton. Yes, and following what CEO Wallace mentioned earlier, I think it would go hand-in-hand with the work that Director McNichol is leading.
Absolutely. And which is very exciting, because this will have a positive impact in the community. So, so, and it's also perfect timing. So, I actually had a question out of, so that, I think, has been well answered. I do have a kind of a sideways question. I'm really curious about the group purchasing organizations that you mentioned in the report. And what the, which group purchasing organization and what that means? I think this is very positive. I'm just wondering how that works and which, which group you're talking about.
I will, through the chair to Counsel McNaughton. I'll attempt to answer it to the best of my ability, but I am not a procurement expert, and maybe the CIO might have some things to fill in. But the municipality participates in a number of group purchasing organizations. OECM, Kinetix, I believe are a member of Canoe as well. And these are all group purchasing organizations that negotiate favorable pricing for their public sector members. So, we'd be working with one of the memberships that we're already a part of, and they've secured preferred pricing from a number of different suppliers for a period of a few years.
Thanks, that was, that's interesting. Thanks very much.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything, any other questions for Julianne? No, okay, I have a couple. With regards to when, when the, whether they're at the Wellington Arena or Bloomfield Town Hall or parking lot, or the Picton Arena, are we going to incorporate appropriate signage? Not just at the entrances to the arenas, but in various locations? You know, similar to the way we do municipal free parking? The signs are not where the, where the EV will be, but further away to direct people so they have a better understanding? Is that part of the plan?
Through the chair to the chair, yes. The signage plan is provided for in the capital costs that the grant would be paying for. So, we don't have the specific signage plan developed yet, but there would be signage on the roadways and in the parking lots, especially in the larger parking lot location here in Picton, to help people find where they're going. The other important tool is the apps that list all of the electric vehicle charging stations. These are used by electric vehicle drivers to find the, the stations that are available. And some, some of the apps, if they're specific to the charging network, will tell you which ones are available at that current moment that you could drive to as well. So, signage, communications, and participation in those digital apps would be important to help people find their way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that only makes sense that they'd be providing site, location maps to their, their specific sites. What better way to draw customers to yours than to say, oh, you need this app. Let's follow this, and I get it, okay. So, I will say, and I was really interested to see that, that there's one of the gas stations in the community. I think I know which one it is. That has a larger lot than most. I'll say not in Picton, is... I think that's an interesting next step for fossil fuel gas stations, whatever. That they see the benefit. And more importantly, some of them are closer to downtown locations, which then there's that, that benefit to the community that houses them, as opposed to having them in a location that is further away. Arenas, further from our downtown cores. I think that's great. Also, I would, and I may have shared it with a couple other members of council, that I did have a conversation, and I will not say who it was, with one of our local grocery store owners that apparently, and it's, he didn't believe that it was not, like, he felt, believed that it was on the radar of all three to, on a regional level of establishing at least level two and possibly level three chargers on grocery store parking lots in our community, which is a positive note. And I, so I'm wondering, saying that, if, if it's also the intent of the department to try to be involved in that conversation, to assist with, with furthering the implementation and maybe speeding it up a little, and maybe even sharing some experience? Is it possible that your department will be involved in some of that, or try to be?
Through the chair. Yes, I think as we move towards looking at the level three project that we, as a municipality, were looking at undertaking, one of the next logical steps is to make all of those one-to-one outreaches with all of the big boxes and the grocery stores to find out what is on their radar. We know of the one gas station that has been funded through a federal program. At their corporate level, there is another grocery store chain in our community that's been funded at the corporate level to install chargers. That funding, there is a federal funding program that opens in September that pays for 50% of your project costs that we'll be exploring. But you need to bulk buy in order to be eligible for that program. And so, you can do that in consortia with other organizations. So, it might be another avenue for us to pursue for a level three is to coordinate that work within the community and have the private sector install. So, we'll definitely be looking down that road. Thank you.
And be part of the partnership that, as you say, can realize some, we'll say, cost savings at the very least. Yeah, coordinating, okay. Counselor Maynard, you did not speak in the first round, so we'll go straight to you, and then Counsel Pennell.
Thank you. While we were speaking, just out of curiosity, I looked at Bancroft, kind of a similar, you know, district. So, it looks like they have three. One, one public one, and one private one, both level twos, and then a Tesla DC fast charging stations, which is not. So, you know, there's a good-sized community tourist-related, and they're still using a level, level two.
Oh, no question, just sharing some information, okay. Counselor Pennell?
Yeah, my question is, as we look into the future, are we looking, as a municipality, to be in, I may call it the fueling of electric car business? Or are we looking to eventually back away from that and perhaps have others that might be involved in this? That we make some money off it without having to start spending a whole bunch to pay for replacement down the road? And I think that's an important question, because it's not only today, it's the future of this municipality. Be wonderful if somebody gave us 100 of those. But down the road, especially as technology changes, I want somebody else holding the responsibility of change rather than municipality. So, are we being cautious as we move ahead, is my question?
Through the chair to Counsel Pennell. The, this project that's in front of me today, I think, is a good first step and test of what the municipality's role in delivering the service to the community can be. We're lucky to have the capital component funded. We believe that the business case is achievable. They're small numbers. But we will have access to lots of data about how people are using it, how the community is using it. And we are planning to review the program in a year's time after we've got a year under our belt. I may defer to the CIO about longer-term considerations for whether or not we want to stay in this business. But what I can say at this moment is it's a good first step and a good way to test what our role could be.
I think we've well discussed and asked poor Julianne a lot of questions. So, if anybody, I would suggest if anybody has any further questions that we... One final one, okay. I was going to suggest that, great, great conversation to have offline, because we could go on for hours on this subject, I'm sure. So, you get the final word, Counsel McNaughton, and then I'm calling the vote.
So, I just wanted to comment on, a comment earlier that I think actually the arenas for level two chargers have some merit. And I just want to, because someone said, you know, for tourists, it might not work. But I think there are a lot of families that are switching over, and they're going to value being able to plug in while their kids can skate. Or they're going to be able to plug in while their kid's playing hockey. So, I actually really like that and think that that's, that's possibly a good long-term location for level two chargers. And, and I, that, that's pretty much the final comment that I wanted to make. Thanks.
Okay. So, as I stated, I'll call the motion. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, so, yes, Counsel Branderhorst, you have something you wish to say? I'm just messing with you. Go ahead and make the motion. Mayor Ferguson is your second.
Okay. This is Branderhorst-Ferguson motion that this meeting now adjourn at 3:39 PM.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried.